This is the Wapaka area school district board of education meeting.
So we've got some spring sports recognition. Carl, do you have any comments that you'd like to share?
Oh, just in the packet you'll see that the recognition for all conference and then also some of the players were or athletes were recognized for post Crescent district representation.
Thank you Carl. Also from Mr. Egbert, Neville Motors has recently conducted a Buick drive for your students and this was a test drive opportunity with which many of you are familiar and the event raised over $4,800. That will certainly benefit our students and our program. So gratitude goes out to Neville Motors. And then Alan Jody Fox and Bob and Christine Falk, is it Christine?
Correct.
Yes, have recently met with the district administration and have put together a very unique gift and donation that will support our students who many times don't have the resources necessary to enjoy a hot lunch. They have gifted a total of $5,000 to the district specifically to our school social workers to be administered over the course of the year for families in need of assistance for the hot lunch program. So certainly our heartfelt thanks and gratitude go out to the Foxes as well as the Focks. And then finally, the district administrators report.
The district administrators report. We have a motion to accept these contributions.
So move with gratitude.
Second.
I think we're meeting. So I can, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Common field progress continues to be on schedule and the field is scheduled for its first athletic event on August 25th. Items not completed at that time will include the men's restroom, however, the women's will be functioning, and the resurfacing of the track.
What are the men going to do?
I knew you were just gonna come out on that one.
Porta potties will be available. Also the district-
If you're given the option, I'll direct you to a porta potty before I'll start our figure with any lady on this earth that I'm going to have.
Also of note, the district does plan to sponsor a tailgate party for that evening from 6 until 7:30 PM. So we are going to be partnering with our new food service management company and we will be having hot dogs, brats, chips, and soda for everyone who has contributed to the project either with their sweat equity or with their generous donations and gifts to the district. So we hope to really make it a special grand opening.
What's the date on that?
August 25th.
Is it the first football game and the first soccer game, I believe, is this the 30th?
Well, actually, if I'm not incorrect, the soccer is a game on the 22nd.
Correct.
But they won't be playing on the field. They'll probably play on the soccer practice field, which is fine. But then from the time the 25th rolls around after that, they'll play on the field. So they'll have their opening sometime.
Correct. Right, I meant their first game on the field, I believe, the 30th or the 31st.
It's number 8 in there, yeah.
You are correct. The Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association, known as WIAA, now offers free concussion insurance to all of its school district members, of which the district is a member. This means that each student athlete is covered up to $25,000, which includes everything from initial treatment to follow-up care and there are no deductibles or copays for our athletes, for their families. Crowe Sanderson Construction Firm has begun demolition inside the high school and will be working weekends to complete as much of the project prior to the opening of the school as possible. So stop on up and see the mess at the high school.
Can I ask a question about that? I know we were delayed a little bit because of permits. I guess I didn't realize, what permits were we waiting on?
The state has to approve any alterations to public facilities, which the school is one.
Okay, so it was just a routine?
Correct.
Okay.
But as a sign of the economy, there was a backlog of permits this summer and so it's actually, it's a good thing for the Wisconsin economy, but it was a bad thing for the timing of the completion of our projects.
Okay.
So we're moving forward.
Yeah.
Making connections will be the theme for the upcoming school year. So you'll hear more about that at our district kickoff on August 30th. This theme will be reflected in our professional development throughout the upcoming school year as we make connections to our students, with our colleagues, within our multi-tiered systems of support, between our instructional practices and curriculum, and through our ongoing community engagement efforts. And then finally, the district mourns the loss of one of its students, Jake Peglow, whose life ended suddenly on July 26th and certainly our heart goes out to all those affected by this tragic loss of life. So concludes my-
Any questions? There being none, we'll move on to section 8 school board. Reports on meetings attended, where there are any meetings attended. There is fast run that anyone wishes you a report on. There being none, we will move on to upcoming meetings, August 17th. We have our board workshop scheduled, August 30th. We have our beginning of the year breakfast. September 5th, first day of school. September 12th will be our regular board meeting for September, beginning at 5:15. And we will make sure you know where that will be. We believe it will be in this building. Finally, the September 26th is the WASB Fall Regional Meeting. For anyone that might be interested in attending that meeting.
Is that the meeting that's over in Mina? She has a Mina.
Yeah.
Okay. The September 26th.
We do suspect that the September 12th board meeting will be at high school.
All right, very good. Finance committee?
Finance committee met on July 24th and at that meeting, Erin Jensen from the city of Wapaka, part of the presentation, presentation of the city's request for the school district to consider creating a fund 80 and a community service fund to help support programming, accessibility to programming for all of our district residents at the city of Wapaka rates, which not everyone, well, people outside of the school district of Wapaka, 16% approximately paying the health of resident rates. And then because other municipalities make a contribution to the city, their residents are able to participate at city rates. This would be a new levy for the school district of Wapaka. There was a good deal of discussion among board and also people who attended the meetings from other municipalities. We listened to Mr. Jensen's presentation, which was very thoughtful and thorough, like the- and felt that we needed more time to discuss this proposal before we would act on the recommendation. And one of the things that we wanted to consider was the data that we collected at our community engagement meeting earlier in the year for Wapaka way, at this right 2K30 event, so that we could look at what the community asked us of us at that and reflect on whether this funding proposal would be something that the community would want us to consider. Anyway, we will give it further consideration. There was no action taken at that meeting or no recommendation made by the community at that time. This ends my report. So I will mention that Erin Jensen will be meeting at 9:00 AM on Monday at the town of Farmington, Helen Hall. So if anyone's interested in probably possibly hearing this presentation second time or for the first time, if you haven't had a chance, this would be an opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Ritter, on the agenda, Ms. Ritter?
So we have a number of statutory required reports this evening, the first of which is the annual seclusion and restraint report. So at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Ritter.
Sure. Again, the school district and especially the special education staff is doing a really nice job of keeping the seclusions and restraints to a minimum. If you look at the report, you will notice that we've had an increase at a couple grade levels or buildings with the restraints and seclusions and that was due to some new students that were transferred to Wapaka this past school year. But I applaud the special education staff for the great job that they do to minimize the escalations and really getting to know the students to keep our seclusion and restraints to a minimum. I also applaud the building principals and the programs that we have in place with our TBIS. That really works on behaviors and that consistency and that consistent message that students are hearing and how we respond to students really makes a big difference as well. Do you have any questions about the report?
When we utilize, when a teacher or a staff member utilizes seclusion, what does that actually entail and where does that happen?
That's a good question. We have one seclusion room established at the middle school. It does have some padded walls in there to decrease any kind of injury of the individual. And that is the only building that has it at this point. Elementary chose not to have seclusions. But we did have a couple seclusions at the high school this past year. We didn't have rooms, but we actually barricaded the doors and wouldn't allow a student to leave the area. And anytime that we restrain somebody from leaving an area, that is a seclusion.
Marie, are those seclusions when they do happen? Obviously, they're monitored, but is there a specific time period that is sort of recommended for that? Or is it each one is an individual to the point where you just have to see what happens?
We, it depends on the individual and their escalation. But we have people trained to communicate with the individual and use crisis communication to help de-escalate them as quickly as possible. So when we're talking about seclusion, we may be talking 10 minutes, 15 minutes. We try to keep it to a minimum.
And I read the report. I mean, it's a very small number and I understand that, but I was just curious what that really entailed.
Good question.
Yeah.
One question, Marie. How many students does this involve? Is it a couple of students who might repeat behaviors that require this type of action?
It depends on the building. Is that what you're asking? Like?
Yes, like say at the middle school, where the numbers for 16, 17 are five or 18.
I think I have that on here. We have primarily a few. I don't want to go into too many details, but it's more than one. It's more than one.
But there might be one or two. That's all I need to know.
Thank you.
So I can just share with you from my past life, when you have numbers that are this small and these are very small in comparison to other like-sized districts, some districts may hold back from even sharing these numbers, the fear of breaking confidentiality. Because when you have such a small population of students who might exhibit behavior that's dangerous to resell for to others, sometimes just putting those numbers out there can violate confidentiality. So that's why if it sounds like we're being a little vague with response, because we are.
I understand.
So along those lines, Greg, from your past experience, do you think the numbers, because ours is like lower numbers and they in fact might be more than a lot of other districts, is that because, do you believe as much as the policy of the district as well as the students? In other words, some districts might say certain behaviors, I'm not going to go into that, and other districts may say, no, we're not going to go into that. I mean, what's your take on that?
Yeah.
I mean, how do we fit it?
It's a good question. It's a difficult question to answer, I think. Certainly, whenever you're in a smaller community, the teachers at the WLC or at the middle school or at the chain, well, regardless of where they are in the chain or the WLC, chances are greater that, you know, the families are known to the educators. And when there's a connection with the family, oftentimes there's perhaps a different approach that's taken. It's less of a line that's drawn, whereas if you're in a larger district and there's no connection with families, some educators may be likely to just say, this is where I draw the line in my classroom and if you cross that line, this is what will happen. And, you know, it's not a fault of people being in larger districts, it's just that lack of personal connection as many times present in a smaller school district. All right, I can tell you that the numbers that we would report, Stevens Point, were right around 400. And, you know, we're only three times aside, so if you look at, you know, a third of 400, you're still well below that. So I think to Marie's point earlier, it's kudos to the staff and to the building leadership for, you know, taking a kinder, gentler, more sensitive approach, yeah.
And there is a lot of communication between the teacher and the parent, the parents. So they get a, teachers will get a heads up at the beginning of the day, you know, about an individual and kind of watch him or her, or during the day, the teachers contacting the parent and having those conversations. And that really helps as well. So it's, that collaboration between home and school is very powerful.
And Marie continues to be on deck as we discuss PI 126, which is Education for Employment, also known as Academic and Career Plan.
Yes, since I missed last month, I thought I'd be involved tonight. In May, you saw a fabulous presentation by Jen Herb and a number of faculty members, staff members, as well as students, just showing you an overview. They gave you an overview of what this detailed plan is. And so what we have created is a three-year plan on how we are going to be educating students in academic and career planning. The offerings that just broaden their offerings, broaden their awareness of the different courses that are offered at the high school and how they support their future. So we have our ownership with classroom teachers and they'll be doing a lot of sharing of how their course relates to students' futures. We will be providing students more opportunities to see what's really happening in Wapaka in the community and the different types of careers that, and businesses that are out here. And so they'll be going on lots of field trips and explorations. We set up a career center. It's called the Wapaka Works and we will be inviting a lot of different businesses into that center for students to listen to presentations as well as different school representatives, post-secondary school representatives, as well as just some career exploration projects that will be happening there. So we'll have field trips at the middle school level as well and continue them at the elementary level. Students will be developing portfolios that they will be leaving with at the end of their high school career. Just their career opportunities. They'll put in lots of, have opportunities throughout the year to write reflections in these portfolios. And we aren't anticipating students to know what they want to be after they leave school, after they leave, but we want them prepared and making good decisions for themselves and have a better, more opportunities during their schooling to see what exactly is out there and to, you know, kind of spike some of their interests and talents and generate some good discussions. So each year, we will be reviewing this plan. What's really exciting about it is that that commitment is not just a counselor project, it's school-based projects that we have a lot of classroom teachers really fired up to participate and support this program. And apprentice programs, we have business, community businesses that are really fired up to support this as well and we've been doing a lot of networking with them. So we're really excited about it.
Is there an opportunity to maybe take on a special project for a business? Like for instance, a graphics art class could design a logo for a business that's looking for a logo, that sort of thing. Is there a way for businesses to submit requests for?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Does that happen?
Does that happen now?
I don't think this happened to date, but it certainly could.
Or a service group that's looking for a website, you know?
They have done that on Mr. Polo's-
Yeah, Mr. Polo's class.
Has developed websites, yes.
That might be something we can formalize in a process, make it known to the public that, you know, we're looking for those kinds of interactions too.
And we sent out surveys to all of the businesses in the community and asking their, you know, how they want to be involved with the schools and that would be something that we'd definitely like to pursue and-
Just to give you an idea, to meet you, I'm on Winchester Academy Board and I don't know if anybody else here, I guess anybody else here is, and they have a website, but when they were developing their website, they asked Mark's class or Mark and then if he could help out and he sort of jobbed it out to students because they, you know, they didn't really have it. And it's a nonprofit and they worked on it and added photos when photos were given, all that sort of thing. And it really is, it's a nice, you know, website. There was no money exchanged, but it was all for another client outside the school district. It worked out real well.
Yeah.
And I think that's an important aspect that all our university students do, because I don't think we can be competing with other businesses, the business husband, providing service for people.
Yeah.
So the intent, ACP, Academic and Career Plan, is part of Tony Evers Agenda 2017 and at the 10,000-foot view level, it was designed to help make meaning to the education for many of our students. So it's really career exploration. So it's, certainly there will be opportunities for our students to partner with local area businesses and business people. But really, the intent is for career exploration and for our students to understand the connection between the coursework that they have to complete and the careers that they desire to have post-high school. So that's, you know, in its most basic form, the explanation of ACP. So if it fits within that umbrella, it could be an opportunity.
It's ambitious.
We wanted an ambitious plan, so it is. Jen Herb is the ACP coordinator and then Julie Kusabuzi, who is in the main of the high school, will be just kind of in charge of the Wapaka Works area and oversee that and help coordinate people that are coming in for presentations and some of the apprenticeship programs. Okay?
Marie, a motion to approve the plan, so?
Second.
Motion second, further discussion?
If you notice that toward the end, there's a section that says the general requirements for school boards and that the requirements have, the question requirements met have all been answered yes.
Any other discussion with regard to the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
We're gonna give Marie a break, yes. Our leg break is on deck and Mr. Egbert is requesting an additional middle school cross-country coach due to an influx of more students.
Yeah, about five, six years ago, we started the middle school cross-country program with about 15 students interested in. It's expanded now to, I think, well over 40 now that they have. And it's just gotten to be where if they're going on a two or three mile run, there's a big variety of ability of pacing themselves. And so just for helping supervision, I think it's needed for two supervisors to be out there coaching the kids and being within groupings of the abilities of the kids.
Carl, who is the person in charge at the present time?
Sarah Ham, the librarian at the middle school.
And do you have somebody in mind for this position already?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion that we add a cross-country coach to our revenue coaches. Second?
Motion second, further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is a very short, very, very-
I don't know if we can ask this now, it's not on the agenda, but I'm just curious how the girls hockey things go. Have an update on that? Did that all get rectified and?
What has happened is the, the coach has been hired. Dan Bauer, who was our coach, has been hired through, we gave the delegation to Stevens Point's AD to do the interview process and do the hiring. With that said, the plan is for Dan to contact the different rinks to coordinate practice times and home schedules. So we have a home schedule, it's on the Wisconsin Rapids, our school schedule, but the sites will be changing as Wapaka was added in. And we're gonna be meeting with the parents probably this fall with the athletes just to set up the ground rules as to how this is all gonna work out for covering the area from Marshfield to Wisconsin Rapids to Stevens Point and Wapaka. So the biggest step was to get the head coach who will help coordinate with the different rinks that are gonna be used for practicing games.
Thank you.
There was not much of a break for you.
That's all right.
No break nonetheless.
So the last memo that I have is-
Yes, sure.
Just an update on the at-risk program that we have. We service at-risk students, you know, the state statute says grade five through grade 12 and at our middle school level, students are serviced more through an MTSS process. So a tiered level approach addressing their academic and behavioral needs. And we have found as this program has developed, that that has been the most effective ways to deliver services to students who, you know, meet those at-risk criteria or either struggling with the academics or the behaviors. As they transition to high school, it becomes more of an at-risk sort of class in which we have students who begin with, they are monitored during a controlled study hall and then we have at-risk teachers who assist them during that time on their academics and they meet with them to watch their grades, their attendance, and provide opportunity to really spend time to develop relationships with them. Because these are students who are really struggling, making those connections with the school. And so the at-risk teachers really work hard at building those relationships so the students really feel that they're accepted and valued.
really feel that they're accepted and valued at school. And then we deliver services. Some students don't, they really struggle with the traditional classes and classwork, so we do have some students that use computerized programs out of nowhere to earn a credit in either English, Social Studies, math, science. Some students respond better to paper pencil packets that they use, and some students, and then we have some students who are just very credit, have very few credits. Those are typically students that transfer into our district, and then we help them through the WIO2 program so that they can earn their degree. So we have, Ms. Daniel McQ is the main AT-Risk teacher, and this last year, Neil Young assisted with the AT-Risk program by picking up a monitored study hall for an AT-Risk class. And then our alternative education teacher, Mr. Charles Peters, also assists with the AT-Risk classes and works very closely with Ms. McQ. So, a great group. First semester, we had a hundred and five students that we were servicing, and second semester, a hundred and twenty-seven. And I was telling Mark, I said, we lack interventions at the high school level, and my hope is that we now are implementing some tutor, some tutors' time, some real intervention, real true interventions at the high school level. And my hope is that we will see a reduction in these numbers, in our AT-Risk numbers, because the interventions that had been happening at the middle school level are now going to be carried over at the high school level. So that's our hope and anticipation.
Okay, well, the program plan are not really changing if it's required an annual approval of the board. Do I have the motion to approve the AT-Risk program as presented?
So.
Motion second, any discussion?
Well, before we pass that, I just wonder if we can put our new high school principal on the spot. You've been a principal for a good number of years. How does the AT-Risk program from where you're coming from compare to what Marie just talked about? Are they pretty similar, or do you see quite a bit of difference?
We have some opportunities to grow and provide different levels of services, and I think it goes back to educating all students and some of the programs and systems that we put into place that benefits your highest achieving kids and your lowest achieving kids. For example, how we set up a grade book, for example, can have a lot of determining factors on how kids are identified and supported once they're identified. And that's not something you do just for AT-Risk kids, that's something you do for all kids, but the idea there would be knowing when they need support and then having that support available to them. So by combining our resources and doing something a little bit different with a study hall where we have teachers that are available to them, you know, one-stop shop, one classroom, eight periods a day, where there's going to be at least two teachers there in the room at all times, you know, that's a different mentality than not having that supportive resource there. We've also made some connections with community members, and we hope to make more connections of community members who are retired and looking for, maybe they could donate back four hours a week or two hours a week in somewhat of a mentoring role, because I think some of our AT-Risk students need more of that adult mentor than that adult tutor. But heck, if they have that academic tutoring side of them in addition to that mentoring side of them, that would be a win-win. So it's, how do we reconnect some of our retirees perhaps, or not even retirees, people in the community who would be willing to donate back a few hours, and then how do we coordinate those types of things and services? So looking at some different models and some different things. Planting some seeds, I would say.
Good, good. Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but just.
No worries.
Do you want to follow up?
I was hoping you would.
Yeah. You said something intriguing that gets down to sort of the level of detail that we need, one needs to attend to when you're looking at things like this. So you said how you set up a grade book makes a difference. Would you like collaborating on that a bit?
Yeah, I mean, grading's a very personal thing to a teacher, so I don't want to find or put any scary, you know, thoughts in people's heads at this point in time, but I think.
We'll wait a month for that.
That'll be tomorrow's email out. No, if we're all, you know, if the three of us are all Algebra I teachers, should it really depend on my final grade based off which teacher that we have? Or should it really depend on the fact that Algebra I should be Algebra I, should be Algebra I, regardless of the teacher that you have? Because we collaborate and we communicate, and we have the highest expectations for all students, regardless of which class that they're in. And then how are we ensuring that? Are we utilizing common assessments at the end of every unit? Are we, am I allowing extra credit? He's allowing retakes, Mr. Akerbrecht? None of that, you know? That's not appropriate or fair or equitable to our students. And how that gets reported out and communicated out into your grade book at this point in time is really up to the professional, which is, to a point, okay, but when you're looking at it from, again, if we're all teaching the same course, how much variance should we allow those professionals in the setup of their grade book? Because I think sometimes there's unintentional consequences when we do the shot across the bow, if you didn't get your homework in, I'm going to give you a zero. What does that actually do to your overall grade? And what message are we sending to the student? And sometimes our AT-Risk students, they don't need to hear all the negative stuff time and time and time again, right? Because they've got probably a lot of other things going on in their life besides the academic part of it. So how do we coordinate that to look more consistent between us, number one, and at the same time, more equitable, so it doesn't matter who you have, your opportunities to demonstrate your knowledge and proficiency in Algebra I are the same, again, regardless of the teacher? So right now, I don't believe we have that level of consistency from a, I would say, curriculum standpoint or even an assessment standpoint either. And then that grading and that reporting out is just another example where through some change of structures and some systems, we can begin, I think it opens the door for some of those other conversations that happen as well, that almost forces our hand in some of those things. So as an example, I think some of that stuff would help us with all students, especially our AT-Risk students, because then, we have summer school programs going on right now, and the student doesn't have to come in and redo the entire semester of Algebra I. They should only have to redo those units in which they didn't show minimum proficiency on. And so that's a way to help kids from falling off track. And by telling them, you haven't learned it yet, but I have faith in you, by the end of this four weeks, at worst or at best, depending on your perspective, you will get it. You know, it's that failure's not an option mentality or a not-yet mentality. So some of the structural things and some of the attitude things, curriculum, you know, focuses and changes, we'll get there.
Thank you very much.
Very strong. The fact that he draws a line and doesn't allow any retakes, you two do what I want to do. All the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This brings us to the consent agenda.
I do approve.
Second?
Motion second, any discussion? We'll call both, Mr. Acker?
Aye.
Mr. Merton?
Aye.
Mr. Farrar?
Aye.
Ms. Mannion?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Shango?
Aye.
Can I just ask you a question, just a general one? Carl, we just passed the consent agenda with all of the coaches. Are we pretty well filled with all of our coaches in areas now? Are we lacking anywhere, any significant?
No, I think we have everything online after the interviews I had and once we get through to Citaravias and get their paperwork in. But there'll be a few more in the next month, but everything else is pretty well covered.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Is that all, are there any more to adjourn?
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. We'll give about five minutes before the person I want to.
Thanks.